Hi. Oran, okay, there's a giant sign in the way, I can't see you back there. Okay, good morning, everybody. We are here for the Marion County Board of Commissioners Board Session. It's Wednesday, May 4th. We're in the -- it's 9:00 AM in the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. And every week we start with a Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gosh, that sounds good. Thank you for being here.
You can all come back next week and join us again if you want. All right, we, at the top of our agenda, we have public comment. And there's a few signed up, and we have a really full agenda, so we're going to limit public comment to each individual for three minutes this morning. Commissioner Willis is going to time that for me. And the first person on the agenda is Ian Watts, and if you'd come over to this table over here, please. And for the record, please give us your full name and where you live.
Okay. My full name is Ian Watts, I live in State in Oregon.
Welcome.
Great place.
Thanks.
It's a great place.
Yeah, we love it. I will try to be quick, I'm going to read, so I don't forget anything. Yeah, my name is Ian Watts, I'm the Chair of a local volunteer group called Oregon People's Vote. We formed in January 2021 with the intention of being an election integrity group that would work closely with the county clerk's office to learn about and hopefully to help improve election processes in Marion County. We have had multiple tours of the election office, we've participated in recounts, observed elections, and worked on gathering signatures for some referendums. In recent months, we've worked closely with election integrity groups in other counties from all over the state of Oregon in a canvassing effort. We focused solely on Marion County in our group, but we exchanged methods and training materials with some of the other counties. We conducted our survey by walking door-to-door in two precincts in Salem, 310 and 350, following our walklists, which were not sorted in any particular fashion. We created walklists from files we obtained from the state containing voter registration and election history as of January 2021. The files we used contained addresses that voters specified as their residences. Some are houses, some are multiplex units, some are unit divisions within a house, and some are units within an apartment building. We would like to share with you some of what we found. We met with Bill Burgess a few weeks ago and shared some of the same information with him as well. When we went to an address, we first assessed whether or not it was a residential building. When we were able to speak with the resident, we first verified that they lived at that address during the national election of 2020. If the answer was yes, we then asked how many people were registered to vote at that address at that time. We would then ask how many people voted. If the numbers they gave us didn't match up with the public record, we would ask them further questions. In some cases, after some discussion, records would turn out to be correct, but many times we found that the information on record was not correct according to the resident. Of the addresses where we were able to talk to a person to gather voting data, we found approximately 26% had some sort of unresolved anomaly. There were a whole range of anomalies. In some cases, it was a person who was registered and had an address, but the resident said the person hadn't lived there in many years. Sometimes, a name showed as registered and voted, but the resident had never heard of that person. Some people said they voted, but the record showed no vote for that person, et cetera. We came across a significant number of addresses that were listed as a voter's residence, but weren't actually a residence at all. Some people had the state cap listed, some people listed an empty lot, some were businesses such as a hair salon and various other examples. If I were to generalize to try to describe the accuracy of the voter rolls, I would describe it as very messy. In summary, we feel that at a minimum, the voter rolls are in need of review, processes for registration are probably in need of scrutiny, and there's a very significant amount of likely incorrect data in the system. We would be happy to meet with any of you at any time to discuss our findings from the canvassing effort. We'd like to help as much as we can as citizen volunteers. We and other groups like us in counties all over the state are committed to election integrity for the sake of fair elections and also for the sake of public trust in the election system. We'd love to see more voter participation, and that starts with trust in the process.
Thank you, Ian, we're going to have to move on to the next one. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All right, Ron Whitwell? You're deferring to Ian?
I spoke for both of us.
Okay, perfect, thank you. How about Marty Alt School? And I'm sure I said that wrong, I apologize.
Yeah, everybody says it wrong.
Me too, I'm my last name, so I am that complicated.
Just so it doesn't sound like a sleaze when you say it.
Please introduce yourself for the record and let us know where you live.
Yeah. My name is Marty Alt School, and I live in South Salem.
Thank you.
I've been working with Oregon People's Vote, and specifically with the oldest voters on the Marion County rolls, by which I mean older than 97. The oldest voter on the rolls has a birthdate in the year 1900 and is still an active voter, but this turns out to be a longstanding clerical error. The voter's real birthdate is 1958, but this has never been corrected. And she lives in, somewhere in Amhill County, and may be registered twice. We found other voters with incorrectly listed birthdates, which could lead to voters being listed and possibly voting twice. We've also found voters who have been verifiably dead for years, but were still on the rolls for the 2020 election, and are still on the rolls as of March of this year. We haven't definitively found that any of these individuals voted. However, the notation detailing when exactly these voters did last vote is opaque, and therefore, we couldn't determine when they cast their last ballot. Sometimes there is a string of no's, meaning no vote was cast, with one lone yes vote, yes, I voted in there, which seems suspicious. This points to one of the most potentially troublesome problem areas in our system. Every voter has a listed effective registration date. Usually, this is the date the voter initially registered, or it may be the date when the system went digital in 1980. However, some deceased voters have an effective registration date significantly after their date of death, even though there's a very specific procedure in place, so this shouldn't happen. Something in the system of cards going back and forth in the mail isn't producing the right information. With errors already occurring under a strict established system, recent moves to reactivate inactive voters may potentially put more dead people back on the voter rolls. And I wanted to add that Marion County has a lot of really interesting people who are older than 97. The oldest active voter is 106.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Jason Yordi? Hello. For the record, please introduce yourself and your location, your home location.
Yeah, Jason Yordi, live in Kaiser, Oregon.
It's a great town, too.
Thank you. Yeah, after the November national election in 2020, I just saw a lot of things that didn't look like it was the people electing their representatives or ballot, or issues that were on the ballot. That kind of got me involved in reaching out and eventually joined the Oregon People's Vote and assisted in their canvassing efforts. Kind of why I'm here today is just to share a few stories from those canvassing efforts. One of the things is, understanding Oregon law is that one is registered as it relates to their place of residence. So I was a little surprised when you come across a rehabilitation center that had 11 registered voters. And when personnel at that facility were contacted, it was stated that, no, this is not a residence. But with regards to HIPAA laws, they were unable, or not at liberty, to discuss the names that were on the voter rolls as they related to that business. Another one is coming across addresses where there is, that do not exist at all. It just makes you wonder how one is able to register with a non-existent address and yet be able to vote. But that is what is taking place. And we just need to figure out how to correct that. While speaking with people, while there was some that did not want to talk, there were those that did, because their vote did not count. They feel kind of disenfranchised when they know that they did turn in a ballot, whether it was through the mail or a drop box. On one particular residence that had said they had voted, and their vote, the voter roll shows that they had did not, we asked, you know, part of the process was asking how they turned their ballot in. This particular individual mentioned that he didn't, basically, he had given it to someone that who was walking through the neighborhood, collecting ballots. And that's probably the reason why his vote was not counted. In another example, that kind of shows how the voter roll is kind of in shambles, or just how the process is not really working. One individual had reported that their vote didn't count because of a signature issue. They had gotten a letter from the clerk saying the reason for their, why their vote was not counted and why. However, the records show that their vote had been in fact counted, yet the individual said they had done nothing with, after they got that letter. So yeah, we need to work on restoring faith in the voting process and getting the vote back to where the people feel that their message counts. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And the last signed up right now is Walt Peters. And if there's anybody else who wanted to join us, just raise your hand when he's finished, and I can call you up.
Good morning, I'm Walt Peters, I live in Salem, Oregon. I'm also with the group of Oregon People's Vote. Want to expand a little bit on the great presentation that Ian gave, he was very good, bud. A couple other concerning items from my point of view. One is when I looked at population growth of the county. From 2016 to 2020, the population grew from 335,000 to almost 346,000. That was an increase of 3% population growth from one federal election to another. Cast votes, 2016, 133,369. When we look at the 2020 federal election, that number changed to 168,254. So for me, that posed the question without knowing the answer. Is it possible for the voting count to increase by 20.7% versus a population growth of only One of the things that I've been focused on with our group is reaching out to addresses that have large numbers of registered voters. I do not have it listed in front of you, but I do remember the number one place on that list, which adds 255 registered voters, which is on Commercial Street. That address is Arches Community Outreach Program. There are a number of places like that out there in our county. That includes different housing facilities, whether it's the Housing Authority Group, whether it's apartment complexes. The one thing that I find common at these places where there are numerous people listed as registered voters, all we're trying to do is confirm that they actually exist and that the information is correct. We cannot get into those places. Each time I reach out to them, the answer is the same, we cannot allow you to come on our property, for various reasons. And with most of the social programs, I've spent hours trying to get an answer from them, and they will never give me an answer. They always send me to somebody else, bounce me back and forth, or I get no response whatsoever. So my concern, and I need to announce that I'm not from Oregon, I'm from Ohio. I had no idea how this process worked here. It is so alarming to me. We've taken what is a, what was a simple act of showing up, showing identification to vote, to a very complicated, unclear process. Thank you.
Thank you, Walt. Is there anybody else that wanted to join us for public comment? Okay. Thank you all for being here today. We always welcome folks for different, whatever topic you want to share with us on Wednesday mornings for public comment. And if there's information that you're expecting commissioners to follow up with, you'll need to send us a direct email after the board session, and then we can communicate with you that way. Okay, now we will move on to our --
Madam Chair, I just want, I want to say, I love them, because the Pledge of Allegiance sounds so great this morning. It was so loud in here, I want to thank you, everybody, for being here. We normally only have like, you know, staff here, a few people, so thank you for being here and saying, saying your words. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a few proclamations today, I think four, possibly. So we're going to start with the first one under Board of Commissioners. To consider approval of a proclamation designated the month of May 2022 as Older Americans' Month in Marion County, and myself and Mrs. Judith Richards are going to start off. How are you this morning?
I'm fine.
I haven't seen you in person since I've been a commissioner, you've just gone on a Zoom leak.
Oh, yeah, just Zoom, yeah. And then I don't have to wear my mask.
Yeah, I see. Okay.
Thank you very much, my name is Judy Richards, and I'm from South Salem. And I found those presentations very interesting, because I feel like they fall right into our proclamation. Today I am here from Northwest Senior and Disability Services Advisory Council. Every year, we once again ask for the proclamation to be renewed for our Older Americans Act. The people of our communities deserve to be, to be recognized and to realize that once that our people, who, those people who are 110 years old and they're still voting, those people quite often are suffering disparities like food, medical issues, transportation to get places. And the Older Americans Act has been able to supply this year after year, but every year, we go back to the federal government, get on our knees, and beg again and again. President Kennedy was the man who started this. It started out originally as the Senior Month, then it went to Older People Month, but eventually, through other presidents, it finally came to the Older American Act. And every year, we come to the commissioners, and I thank you all for having us today, for able to ask you to proudly proclaim that our Marion County is proud to do this for our older Americans. This program supplies food for those who may not have enough. You forget that many of our seniors are really in disparaging. And many of them, as I now know, medically have family members with Alzheimer's and other diseases that just don't go away. And they're alone, they're at home with no one to help them, until they fall and end up in the emergency room, and the Older Americans Act helps provide for this. It gives them transportation, it gives them food, it helps find home care for them. It's not an all and all, but it certainly is proudly something that we've been able to do year after year for our older Americans. And now that I am definitely in the older American area, because it was originally made for 60 and over, so now that I am older, I realize that this is a very valued thing, and I thank you for allowing me to bring this proclamation for you.
Thanks for being here, and thanks for serving on the board with me. It's a really important role that you fill for the community and your voice, and I, you're very persistent, which I really appreciate. And do you want to give a plug for open seats for that board right now in Marion County?
I would love to, yes. Northwest Senior Disability Services, and I know there's a lot of nurses out here. Not in white, but I recognize you, so, yes. And we are always looking for people who are interested in joining our advisory council. We also do legislative work, as many of us remember. And we gather once a month, and we make a difference in the Northwest Senior and Disability Services Agency, which many of you are probably in contact with to do services for many of your people. And we have a board that our commissioner now sits on. And this board is the final say of the things that we decide if it's going to work for our people, not the agency. Does it work for our people? It is probably the only thing I've ever done in my life that I can actually say it's people first, and it is people first. And we need people from every county, and we've served five counties, so you can't escape. But we would love to have you come online and see, our meetings are on Zoom, and we have a very active group and a very vocal group, and we'd love to have people with, have experience and passion, so please visit us. Will we be reading the proclamation?
The commissioners will read it.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Commissioner Willis, would you start the proclamation, unless you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, I would, with your indulgence, Madam Chair.
Absolutely.
You know, I have a big family, I have a bunch of little kids at home, and so I'm often reminding everybody that, hey, you know, we have to think about the folks with kids and the families, and they have needs that are a little bit different than maybe other folks. I think this is also an important time to remember that older Americans also have needs that might be different than people like me or people in my family, and this is sort of how we do things here in Marion County, is we're all, we're all in it together, and we all look after each other, and so I'm really happy about, about this proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much.
Do you want to make a motion?
Please.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve proclamation designated the month of May 2022. I'm one of those people that's hard for me to read these days.
You fit this category?
I, I
Not quite yet, I think.
As Older Americans Month in Marion County, it's probably appropriate that I'm making this motion as the oldest commissioner.
I will second the motion.
Yeah, it was kind of confusing.
It's okay.
How'd you get through it? I got there.
It's all, it's all the eyes on us, just kidding. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, others in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thank you. And now will you begin the proclamation?
I will.
Thank you.
In the matter of proclaiming May 2022 as Older Americans Month in Marion County, a proclamation. This matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled meeting on May 4th, 2022, to proclaim May 2022 as Older Americans Month in Marion County, whereas the citizens of Marion County include numerous older Americans who enrich and strengthen our community, and?
Whereas Marion County is committed to engaging and supporting older adults, their families and caregivers, and acknowledging their many ongoing valuable contributions to society, and whereas we acknowledge the importance of taking part in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being, no matter one's age, and?
Whereas Marion County can enrich the lives of older individuals in our community by promoting home, promoting home and community-based services to support independent living, involving older adults in community events and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Now therefore, the Marion County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2022 as Older Americans Month in Marion County. We urge residents to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as vital members of our community. Dated and signed this day, 4th day of May 2022. Would you join us in the front of the podium for a photo?
Thank you, thank you very much. Good to see you. Last time I saw you, you were, you know, you were wearing this. See, when you get old, you know everybody.
I thought that was a problem only commissioners had. All right, now we're going to move on to the next proclamation, which I'm excited that we were able to put on the agenda for today. After last week, I thought, you know, we really need something special, especially after the last couple of years. So next, we're going to consider approval of a proclamation designated the week of May 6th through the 12th, 2022, as National Nurses Week in Marion County. And last week, we passed a proclamation specific to our correctional nurses, and I'd asked, is this kind of encompassing and undershadowing? Said, no, so why, we're here today. So thank all of you who are here, there's several of you, and we have microphones set up for all five of you, but I don't know if all five of you are here, so I'm just going to go through the list, so then you can grab a chair. So Deana Young from the Marion County, Matt, the Medical Assisted Treatment Nursing Program? Hi, just find a chair. Lorinda Beagle, Marion County Public Health Nurse. Natalie Stone, oh, good, Marion County Behavioral Health Nurse. Lisa Lewis, ICU Nurse from Salem Hospital. And Sherry Steele, the Chief Nursing Officer for C N E M Hospital. And if, do you have others with you, Sherry?
I do.
Do you want to, and there's also seats and microphones over here, you don't want a crowd together over there. You don't all have to talk, we just want you all on camera. So I just have a couple of points that I want to raise before we give the microphone to all of you. So Nurses Week in general, from assisting the life-threatening ER crisis to delivering babies and caring for the elderly in their last moments, nurses perform some of the most difficult and heartbreaking tasks in the medical world. As workers who perform the most essential healthcare tasks, nurses serve the first point of contact for most patients. National Nurses Week honors their contributions and sacrifices and reminds us to thank the medical professionals who keep us healthy. It's celebrated this week, and is the birthdate of celebrated Nurse Florence Nightingale, which is pretty great. So who's, did you, I didn't know if you talked amongst yourselves in the audience, does somebody want to go first? Or I can just go through the list? Did you raise your hand?
Sure.
Go for it, so introduce yourself.
Yes, good morning, my name is Sherry Steele, I'm the Chief Nursing Officer at C N E M Hospital in State in Oregon, and I have Jen Brady with me, who's our Clinical Nurse Educator, and Krista Wellsant, who is our Emergency Department Manager. And just want to say thank you to all the commissioners for inviting us here today and for recognizing nurses, certainly the last couple of years, who could have predicted all the things that would happen, and especially in healthcare. And so for nursing, not only were they navigating all the challenges that everybody else was navigating with daycare and homeschooling, and spouses losing jobs, and financial issues, and all of the other things that happened, and then they had to come into work and deal with a virus with unknown effects, and a wildfire, and an ice storm, and patient surges, and supply chain issues, and more challenges than any of us could have ever predicted. And watching the nurses deal with all of that and rise up over and over, and we kept asking more and more, we all understand the staffing shortages that people were dealing with, and, and just seeing them come in over and over and navigating all of that and keep giving and giving, and I'd say in 38 years of nursing, I've never been more proud to be a nurse in the last couple of years, to see that these people are partners in what they did, you know, so. So I say nurses nurturing, united, resilient, strong, and empowered. I think we all understand the difference we can make in the life of a patient and their family, but I think what we all learned the last two years is the difference that we can also make in our communities. And when we pull together as a team, boy, we've done some amazing things. And when we pull together as a team, boy, we've done some amazing things the last couple of years. So just really grateful to be part of such an amazing group of people with nursing. So thank you for having us here today and appreciate the acknowledgement.
Thanks for being here. How about you, what over there? If you could just, if you could, the microphone is.
Is it okay if I stand up?
Only if you hold the microphone.
We all know we're not used to sitting.
I'll just need you to hold the microphone so that way.
My name's Lisa Lewis. I'm an ICU nurse here in, at Salem Health. And I'm one of many thousands of nurses there. So I certainly don't represent all the nurses. But I was asked just to give a little history about how I got into nursing. And obviously, I got into it for the glam and the glory and the fabulous outfit. Actually, my story's a little bit different. I was an artist. I was a professional dancer and I got tired of being a starving artist. I liked science and I liked people and it just seemed like a good fit. But there's as many different reasons for us becoming nurses as there are nurses where I work. We all have a separate reason. We're all strong in some ways and not as strong in others. And then our sister and brother nurses, we all pick up for each other there. It's a real community. And, you know, I might be a nurse on the clock right now, but when I retire, I'll still be a nurse. When you're off the clock at home, you get those texts and phone calls, hey, you know, you're a nurse. Tell me about this rash. And you see body parts of people you never wanted to see and can't unsee. That's part of the dedication of being a nurse. We've had a rough couple of years, something that, you know, I've been doing this 30 years, I never, ever, ever imagined I would see. The one, one of the main things that stand out is it, in the beginning, we were heroes and we got donuts and we got pizza sent to us. And then it got kind of dark. That stopped. And then, you know, people got politicized and were very anti-nurse. And it was hard. It was very hard. I think you came to our ICU.
It's nice to see you.
Yes, sir. It's nice to see you again. We discussed that, how we would be up in the ICU fighting for somebody's life or holding their hand at the very end when their family couldn't be there. And then we'd clock out and we'd look forward to going home to the things that make us happy, punching bag, you know, in the garage or taking a run or being with your family. But on the way there, there were protesters outside of our hospital. So it was such a juxtaposition to be up there being dedicated to our patients and having to leave and face that. So our appreciation to you for recognizing nurses and making this month of proclamation is really different than Nurses Month and Weeks that we are celebrated at Salem Health. They treat us, you know, very well and are very thankful. But it's different this time. It's much different this time. And I look, you know, the community of nursing. I mean, you know, if I, if I see you on the street, it's like, you're a nurse, I'm a nurse. We're tied by a bond. And I'm kind of rambling about nursing. But you want to see what's in a nurse's pocket? The granola bar and mint. Anyways, I can go, I can go on for a long time. But we appreciate you recognizing the profession of nursing. Thank you.
Absolutely. Does Deana, the, go ahead.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Deana Young and I am a nurse at Addiction Services over on Silverton Road. I've been a nurse and worked in the medical field for about 15 years. And I've been in Addiction Services for about three and a half. So it's a fairly new field for me, but I love it. I'm a local girl. I grew up in Silverton and I feel very fortunate to have grown up here in Marion County and to have raised a family here. It's such a great place to experience Oregon's diversity and just to have a healthy lifestyle here. We have such great healthcare and just so many wonderful things in our community. I love being a nurse and working at Health and Human Services. The team I get to work with every day is phenomenal. They're more like extended family than anything else. I know that sounds very cliche, but it really is true. So I'm very fortunate to be able to work with them every single day. Our program right now, we serve approximately 216 individuals. And we offer services to adults that are struggling with opiate use disorders. And we strive to tailor treatment plans to them and to meet their individual needs. Some of what we do includes specialized services for pregnant women, families with dependent children, individuals that are in the child welfare system and the criminal justice system. And we get to help the most vulnerable people that are at risk for overdose and death in our community. So we feel very fortunate to get to help people every day with this opioid epidemic that we have right now. The nurses, there's two other nurses and myself in the MAT program. And we feel like our role as nurses in the MAT program is that of a support position. We, we work with the counselors to come up with ways to support our clients in their recovery efforts. We provide documentation and observation to the medical director, which is Dr. Jeffrey Ludi. And we also work with the team as a whole to come up with plans that provide successful recovery for our clients. And so we just feel very lucky to be a part of such a great team of diverse people and to get to do what we do every day. And we just wanted to say thank you so much for inviting us here today and for recognizing us. As everybody else has said, the last couple of years have definitely been a roller coaster. And so it's, it feels really good to be recognized for the work that we do. So thank you very much.
Thanks for being here and thanks for what you do.
Absolutely.
I'll just go next since we work in the same building. My name is Natalie Stone. I'm one of the RNs. I'm on the, I work with the adult behavioral health. And I'm probably going to do a little bit more reading than actual talking. So I just wanted to say thanks for inviting us here. We all got picked to represent the nurses and so we all feel kind of special. So I just wanted to thank you for that. There are, over in behavioral health, we have three and a half nurses. Initially, there were seven, but now we're down to three and a half. And for a time, I was by myself for like seven months, which was a lot of fun. So we work with clients who deal with severe, severe mental illness, which can be really debilitating. And it interferes with their functioning and it's usually pretty chronic. As nurses in the community, rather than in a hospital, we work with a multi-discipline team heavily. I mean, it's a daily constant thing. And we rely on the community resources. So when the community resources for our clients decrease, our resources decrease as well as for what we can do for them. So our number one focus is always on the client. When the clients come in for the appointments with the prescribers, we have two psychiatrists and five nurse practitioners. We are the first ones that they see. We do a physical and a mental assessment, any health changes, med changes. We give long-acting injectables three days a week. These clients sometimes have difficulty remembering or wanting to take daily medication. And a lot of them, when they get this injection, they stay stable without having to worry about popping pills every day. We evaluate clients on how to take their meds, what side effects to look for. We educate their families and we educate the communities, the foster homes they live in on their medications. We do med interventions for clients who need assistance in between appointments. And we also coordinate with the counselors and caseworkers daily. So we wear many hats and I could go on and on, but I won't. Most people not in healthcare don't realize that we, as nurses, have our own licenses and we have our own scope of practice. Physicians have their own licenses and scope and we have ours. We do assessments, nursing diagnosis. And I think sometimes it's hard for people to understand when we're saying, oh, we can't do that because we actually have a scope of practice that regulates our work. So our core belief, in my opinion, is that everyone should be treated with dignity and respect and have access to high-quality healthcare, no matter who you are. And I just wanted to thank you for letting us speak. And we can't do it without your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Double mic. So I'm Lori Beagle, Lorinda, is what my mom calls me when she's mad at me. And I have been with Marion County for, in June will be 14 years. So I started off with behavioral health and got to spend a couple of days a month at A and D. So really familiar with the amazing job that these ladies are doing. And the last year, I've worked in public health. So a couple of days a week, I get to poke people with immunizations and also have people come in with, and I work with our CDIA, our communal disease people, and also our STI screenings and that kind of thing for community. And then three days a week, I get to play with babies. So two days a week, I make them cry and three days a week, I get to play.
Better odds.
Yes. And, you know, and we've worked some things around. It's generally, we're a home visiting program at early childhood nursing. And we support pregnant women and new families with new children. Or maybe if they have, also our cocoon program wraps around families that have kiddos with long-term chronic diagnoses that they, I always like to consider my job in that end of helping people not fall through the cracks in our medical world. So I shout out to my sisters and brothers at the hospitals. I tried that. Wasn't for me. I love public health. I like the preventative side of things to support people from, hopefully, I mean, that was our big deal during the COVID. I totally felt for you guys out on the front lines and felt that responsibility of doing our end to keep people out of the ERs and out of the ICUs with education and vaccines and just be able to support people that way. So I, I'm proud to be a nurse. I'm proud also to have walked through, through this to support our community. I love people. I, and the other nurses I work with, we love the clients that we serve. It's, we want them to succeed and to be healthy. And it feels good to be able to help promote that. So I appreciate you guys having us. So nurses rock.
Thank you for being here. Commissioners, if you want to add any comments before I finish out my.
I love nurses.
Oh, me too.
You know, I, I just think of like us.
I needed one this morning.
There's several.
I think public service is a big deal for me and for all of us. And when I think of like, why, how did that happen? My mom's a nurse. She taught nursing. After she stepped away for a bit, then she went back to nursing. And my wife's a nurse. My brother-in-law's a nurse. And I think I kind of learned that service mindset from all the nurses in my, like, when I think about it. Like, it's not, and it's not necessarily that somebody like sat me down and taught me, this is how you're supposed to live, but just watching them and their work. And I think most of us, when we go to the hospital or we get healthcare, most of the healthcare we get is actually from nurses, right? A doctor walks in for five minutes and then like pieces, right? But like, you know, whenever we've had babies, it's the nurses that really take care of my wife and do most of the work. And I just so admire that. I so admire your profession. I so admire people that, you know, service is the first thing, you know? And I just think that's, it's kind of like with our sheriff's deputies, where it's like, we totally take for granted all the work that nurses do for our community, you know? And so I'm really glad you said, hey, let's bring them out and let's thank them publicly because I don't think you all get thanked enough. And I also want to thank the organizations that are represented here too because you guys provide local healthcare that's relevant to the people, to us, those of us living here. You know, sometimes, and this may be controversial, but sometimes you have organizations up in Portland that they're not really from here and they say you have to do it our way or it's the highway, right? And working with you guys, both Salem Hospital and Santiam and our Health Department during the pandemic of the last two years, you all did such good work at trying to make sure that our community was taken care of and protected and keeping us all together. And so I just want to thank you individually, but then thank you organizationally too for your work over the last couple of years.
Thank you, Commissioner. I skipped over both of you, assuming since you weren't on the list that you didn't want to talk. But do you want to share something with us?
No, I mean, yeah, thank you for having us and for recognizing us. It's been a rough two years, the roughest probably of my career. I've been a nurse for 14 years. And I just love serving our small community hospitals specifically for that reason. The reason I'm there is because I grew up in the community and I like to see the people come through the doors who I know, who I know I can make a difference for. So that's, that's what draws me to continue to work in our community is I like, I like to serve the people who are my neighbors and my friends. So.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jen Brady. I would like to say that as well. One of the main things that I really noticed, and I think we all felt, was us coming together as a profession. We came out of the woodwork. People that were retired came back. People that were nurse practitioners came to the front line, helped in our ICU. We were all in it together to cover the volumes that we had. There was a lot of, a lot of death and trauma the last couple of years. And it really took all of us working together to create that environment. And that's one of the reasons why I went into the education portion of it recently is because providing support to us, to the nurses, is probably one thing that it isn't happening all the time and it can happen on a daily basis, not just, we really appreciate being invited here. But on a day-to-day basis, every single nurse is going through something at home, something at work. It happens everywhere. And so supporting each other, no matter what our roles are, where we work, it definitely is a community. And we are basically sisters and brothers in nursing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all for being here and what you do. I know my first ride-along I did in Marion County was with the traveling nurse that we went and checked on babies. And I went, oh, my gosh, we do that?
We get to do that?
Yeah, well, yeah. And we went to different apartments and checked on mom and checked on the baby. Well, I didn't, but I got to observe it. So really understand the work you do and how important it is now that I'm here. And then Lisa, I'm still emotional about that day that I stood in ICU with you and the doctors and all the nurses there and saw the emotion, heard the emotion. And when you said, there's a person behind me who's not going to make it out of ICU and they're not vaccinated and there's a person next to them that is and they're going to make it out. I went, oh, wow, making a difference. And I heard the emotion with what you were saying. And I remember I wrote an opinion piece about that and put it in the newspaper. And I just want to say thank you for impacting my life and others as a result of what you do. And then for State of the County, we actually had, I actually had a guest who was a nurse at Salem Health, Katie Mix. She's down in, I think, the E, E, Emergency Room or something. And we called her out, I called her out at State of the County. And all the nurses, I mean, all the people were recognizing what the work that all you are all doing in the last two years. And nobody has not been impacted by that. But you're like the, I don't want to say this because I've never been in a battle, but you're the front line during this last two years of what we've gone through. And I just want to say thank you. And I'm glad you're here today. And I'm glad we're smiling today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, it means a lot to us that you all took the time out of your day to come down here. I know it's a bit of a morning. It's going to be a little longer for those of you in the audience that are waiting. But this is really important to me. It's important to the board, but I have many friends that are nurses. And the last two years have been hell for all of you. And I don't think that there's really a bucket of words that we could say that would make. of words that we could say that would make a difference, but thank you, truly. You really do care for every single person that you come across, regardless of the department that you work in, or the cell phone message that you receive. Or I see on Facebook often new moms and different folks crying out for help. And nurses always respond, because that's what you do, because you take care of people. And it really did show. I'm deeply sorry for those of you that were impacted by the politics of this pandemic, truly. It is a difficult spot to be in, no matter where you are. But when you're just trying to take care of people and respect their choices, thank you for respecting their choices, because that matters. It matters to what you do, but it matters to those of us that are patients. I recently had some excellent care at Santiam Hospital, and the nurses were so great. They didn't even pretend to know me when I came through the door, which was really great, too. But it does feel like a family for all that you do. All of my nurse friends travel together. They share holidays together. They raise their families together. And I think really that community is what is the glue to the healthcare and the love that you provide to each of us. So I just want to say to the global world that there's lots that you can be doing right now for nurses, and you should always be doing. First and foremost, buy them a meal. They don't eat. They actually do eat those granola bars or whatever she had in her pocket on a regular basis. So the next time you're at Costco, pick up a case and drop them off at your local hospital. Or call one of your local restaurants and, you know, call ahead, determine how many nurses are on the shift, and send them dinner. It'll probably be cold when they eat it, but at least they'll get to eat dinner that shift. And donate blood. I think people don't realize how important it is to a nurse's job to have blood ready, available for whatever they're doing. So go out and do that. And then, at the very last, if you can't afford to do any of those things, just write a note. You can drop off a note at any reception desk, or just pop it in the mail and just say thank you. I know that it matters when it's received on the other end. Even if they're running from door to door, they're going to read it, and they're going to appreciate it and probably keep it close by. So, thank you so much for being here, and thank you for what you do. And if we can be helping any of you in your industries as a Board of Marion County Commissioners, I hope that you'll reach out, because we'll show up. Would you make the motion?
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve proclamation designated in the week of May 6 through 12, 2022, as National Nurses Week in Marion County.
Thank you. Commissioner Cameron?
I'll second the motion.
Sorry, thanks. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Would you please?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Before the Board of Commissioners of Marion County, Oregon, National Nurses Week, May 6 through the 12th, 2022. Proclamation, whereas National Nurses Week is celebrated annually from May 6, National Nurses Day, through May 12, Florence Nightingale's birthday, and whereas Oregon has 72,000 registered nurses, which constitutes the state's largest healthcare professional, and whereas the nursing profession plays a critical role in improving patient outcomes, increasing access, coordinating care, and reducing healthcare costs, and...
Whereas the depth and breadth of the registered nursing profession meets the different and emerging healthcare needs of the American population in a wide range of settings, and whereas nurses met the challenge of an unimaginable COVID-19 pandemic, we have witnessed courage, compassion, dedication, and leadership in caring for our Marion County residents. And whereas the demand for registered nursing services are greater than ever because of the complex healthcare challenges we face, as well as the aging of the American population, and...
Whereas more qualified registered nurses will be needed in the future to meet the increasing needs of our community. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Marion County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims May 6 through 12, 2022, as Nurses Week in Marion County, and asks all residents of this community to join us in honoring our healthcare heroes, the registered nurses, excuse me, who care for us, and to celebrate the accomplishments and efforts of registered nursing to improve our healthcare system, and show our appreciation for the nation's registered nurses, not just during this week, but at every opportunity throughout the year, dated in Salem, Oregon, this fourth day of May 2022.
Would you join us all in the front for a photo? Because this proclamation has the wrong year. Hi, how are you? So, are you going to, do you want to come over here? Let me even this out. Yeah, okay. Now you got to turn. You got to turn a little. Your foundation has to go to your market, so we're going to reissue it and mail it out. So don't hang that one up quite yet. I was just there with her to meet her name. I should see you. I want to see those people.
I should too. I'm actually just, I answered my question. I'm going to show her.
It only cheers me up, but I was like, wait a second. What year are we? I was like, can somebody leave their stuff? Is that your stuff, Tamara? Okay. Oh, somebody left glasses over here.
Uh-oh.
Probably, it's over, we got it. Tamara. Thank you, everybody. If you can take your conversations out to the hallway, please. Thank you. And we'll move on to our next agenda item. Under Community Services, we're going to consider approval of a proclamation designated the month of May 2022. Okay. As Foster Parent Appreciation Month in Marion County. Tamara Getch, Shani Starr, and there's somebody else that'll...
Oh, sorry, I'm Joe Sarkas, I'm with the Department of Human Services.
Hi, Joe.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Tamara Getch, Director of Community Services. As a family member of people who have provided foster care over my lifetime, as well as providing adoption to those who have been in their care, I'm really happy to be here to present this proclamation for consideration. This year's theme for Foster Parent Appreciation Month is Kinship and Relative Care: Keeping Families Together. Relatives and kinship care providers are essential to providing a strong backbone of support in times of need of young people in our community. As you said, today, we have Shani Starr, who is instrumental in providing supports and services to our kids in need of care, and Department of Human Services, who has the difficult job of lifting up this important service in our community. Shani?
Thank you, Tamara. Good morning. Chair Bethel, Commissioners Willis and Cameron, thank you so much for having us. Shani Starr, Executive Director for CASA of Marion County. I think I was before you last month for Child Abuse Prevention, saying I long for the day I am out of a job. And that isn't true. So we're here this month to bring awareness for foster care. And we have 509 children and youth in foster care in Marion County. That's just 509 too many. But because that is our reality, it is our hope during the month of May to bring awareness to the really hard work that is brought before those who choose to be in the foster care world. That ranges from our caseworkers, to our CASA volunteers, and really on the front lines, our resource parents, who are caring for those 509 children and youth in Marion County. As Tamara mentioned, the month of May is Foster Care Awareness, and our theme is Keeping Families Together. We know the reality, the science and the data is, and the research, that our children do better when they're with family. And so highlighting relative and kinship care, and really focusing on what we can do as a community to support those families, to care for their family members, is really critical. In the month of May, we will, at the end of the month, be hosting an appreciation dinner for our resource care providers, just to say thank you. It's hard work. Our little ones have been through so much trauma, and abuse and neglect because of that trauma, and we have to help them heal. And that oftentimes is really emotional and trying work. So I'm happy to be joined by my colleague, Joe Sarkas. He is our Foster Parent Champion for Marion Polk and Yam Hill Counties, and he will share a little bit of the data and statistics that we have regarding our resource families here in Marion County.
Yeah, again, thank you so much for having us here today. Joe Sarkas, Resource Family Champion. So Shani mentioned the 509 youth that we have in care here in Marion County. We have 157 resource parents. So you can see there's a gap right there. They do so much for us. We have age ranges that go across the gamut. I have some of the data here. So under five years old is about 40%, six to 12 is about 25%, and then 13 and above is about 32% of our kids in care. So you can see it's pretty evenly distributed. So the skill sets that our resource parents have to have is just so large, and they have to do so much for us. And you all might not be familiar with the term resource parent. You might be more familiar with the term foster parent, but we changed that to resource parent, because they're a resource for the entire foster care system. It's the child in care, it's the family of origin, it's the court system, it's the caseworkers, it's the doctor appointments, it's the therapists, it's the CASAs that come and help support. They're a resource to every one of those pieces, and they just do so much for us. And so I'm just so excited to have this month where we can really think about opportunities where we can donate, volunteer, or just say thank you to a resource parent, because it goes such a long way. Again, thank you so much for having us here today.
Thank you for being here. Anything you want to?
Thank you, Shani. Thanks for all your work to take care of our kids. And thank you for your partners here. I think we, some of us, some of us do, but some of us don't know how lucky we are to have you and the team fighting for the foster kids here in Marion County. I mentioned it the other day, but there's really a group of people who, these are not your kids biologically, they're not related to you, but you have a heart and a calling for this work. And we're really, really lucky to have that group of you that just keeps fighting the fight for these kids in our communities. I just want to say thank you to you and to the foster parents that you're representing today.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's a village.
Commissioner Cameron?
Just a one, there's always this statistic that a guy by the name of Dick Whittnell always used to use, was the kids that, the percentage of kids that were in foster care that didn't have a CASA, right? And just think about this. We know, we talk about it all the time. We did the no meth, and you brought this up the other day at the Public Safety Coordinator, or the reentry breakfast that, you know, our community goes after the no meth, not in my neighborhood. We have this now epidemic of foster care kids. And then there's this next step of, okay, where's our CASA? And I can think about that. I mean, I think I got over this in the House of Representatives in 2005, no meth in my neighborhood was going on. And then the foster care issue, and I remember being in meetings, how do we help foster care parents? And then what you've done at CASA, and making sure that those kiddos have a CASA, which will help keep them out of foster care. And then the other uniting families back together is just, it's all a great work that's being done. And it will make a, it just changes the trajectory of our community, one person at a time. You change one person, you change the community. And so thank you for all the work that you do as a team.
Being a foster parent's hard. My mom was a foster parent when I was younger, and at one point, we had seven kiddos in our house in addition to the, you know, herd of us. And I think it's one of the hardest things I ever did as a child, was to just live in that home, to be honest. Those kids were experiencing a lot of difficulties, and they don't know what to do with it. So we just loved them up as best we could. There's never enough foster parents. In Marion County, it seems like I've been a part of this system for quite some time. And I understand why it's hard to open up your home to other people in general, and then to children who have special, unique circumstances that come with them. And honestly, I don't know that the state makes it the easiest either, in some cases, no offense. I know you don't write those rules, but I love that you're out there championing these foster parents and the resources that they need to make them successful. So thank you for that. I did not know that position was a thing, and I'm sure whoever came up with it understood from the foster parent perspective, the navigation that it takes to be one. I imagine there's probably not enough respite providers either for those foster parents, just like there's not enough CASAs. So, everybody has something to do every day, right? But really, what we need to do is really look inward and make sure we're taking care of our community, because this is where we live, and we want it to be healthy. Thank you for what you do. Thanks for bringing them here today. And to all the foster parents out there before, now, and in the future, thanks for what you do, because loving on our kids really is what makes life the best. Commissioner Willis, would you make the motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve a proclamation designated the month of May 2022 as Foster Parent Appreciation Month in Marion County.
I will second that motion.
The motion in a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. And I would make a suggestion as she starts it, but you guys seem to know what you're doing. So someone choose.
We've been alternating.
All right. In the matter of proclaiming May as Foster Parent Appreciation Month, the proclamation, this matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled meeting on May 4, 2022, to proclaim May as Foster Parent Appreciation Month. Whereas we recognize that the growth and development of children is of utmost importance, and that every child deserves a safe, loving, and stable home. Whereas many children in our community must be temporarily removed from their homes to ensure the child's physical and emotional needs are addressed, and...
Whereas foster parents, also referred to as resource parents, who open their hearts and homes to support children whose birth families are in crisis, play a vital role in providing a safe and strong foundation for the children. And whereas there are numerous individuals in public and private organizations, the courts, and in the face-based community who work to support the foster care system and recruit foster families, and...
Whereas, May has been designated National Foster Care Month, and this year's theme is Relative and Kin Connections: Keeping Families Strong, which highlights the importance of a child's meaningful connection to their relatives and the important role kinship care has in the foster care system. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Marion County Board of Commissioners asks everyone to join together to thank individuals and families that provide support, affection, love, and security to the children in their care, as well as those organizations and agencies that support foster families and proclaim the month of May as Foster Parent Appreciation Month, dated at Salem, Oregon, this fourth day of May 2022. Thank you. Would you join us for a photo?
Oh, you're already up here. I thought I was delaying this situation. Sorry.
Three, two, one.
There we go.
Thank you.
Are you going up next month for some more?
You can. All right. Now we're going to move on to our fourth and final proclamation of the day. Is it possible, Matt, will you bring that easel? Somebody put it behind the speaker stand so they can see it on the TV. And we're here to consider approval- And we're here to consider approval of a proclamation designating the month of May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Marion County. Laura and Scott.
Morning.
Good morning.
We've made it to the fourth proclamation.
They're all so important. I spent all day doing this. Brought attention to the things.
Well, we appreciate you having us again this morning.
Sure. Yeah, I get the pleasure of introducing them. I'm Susan McLaughlin for the Official Record from Health Promotion and Prevention over in our Public Health Department. And I'll keep going here while he struggles with that. I have the privilege of introducing you to Laura and Scott, who represent a partnership across our department between Public Health and Behavioral Health. We've been growing our mental health promotion and suicide prevention program in the last couple of years by creating this partnership that added Laura to the work that Scott is doing on our team. So looks like they're set up, and I'm very honored to be here today to be part of the proclamation they're going to present to you. So thank you for having us today.
Thank you. So for the record, my name is Laura Sprouse. I'm the Zero Suicide Program Coordinator for Marion County Health and Human Services.
And I'm Scott Vu, Mental Health Promotion and Suicide Prevention Coordinator.
And again, we just want to thank you this morning for the opportunity to come and share more awareness around mental health and wellness in our community. When we came to you with this proclamation about a year ago, we couldn't imagine that our community and world would continue to experience loss, disappointment, and pretty significant trauma in 2021 and into 2022. And even now, as we are turning a page in our response to the global pandemic, we are still living through other distressing national and world events that may also be taking its toll on our mental wellness. These events may not be local to us, but we still feel the impact, and we want to emphasize to everyone that their mental health matters, and no one should feel ashamed for reaching out when they, for support when they are struggling. Within the past year, the Marion County Health and Human Services Zero Suicide Champions Committee, which I chair, has offered several opportunities for employees to engage in wellness activities and receive training around mental health and suicide prevention. This year, we are sponsoring more mental health and suicide prevention trainings for Marion County staff, not just for Health and Human Services staff, but for all staff, to better serve the individuals in our services and to better serve one another. Last year, our committee also participated in a statewide Messages of Hope campaign by placing signs like you can see up here, and I think we brought you some last year as well, with hopeful phrases around our Health and Human Services campuses, and then we held these up a couple days to wave and encourage, wave out and encourage people as they drove by our campuses. We've gotten a lot of amazing feedback and gratitude from employees and from community members regarding the impact of these signs. And I just want to share a brief story about a community member who came to the psychiatric crisis center and was impacted directly by these signs. This individual is experiencing significant emotional distress and thoughts of suicide, and they sat in the parking lot and considered leaving PCC to go home and end their life. However, they saw one of these signs in the window that says, "Don't Give Up," and they instead called PCC for an intake. So it's amazing how these small encouragements and these opportunities to share hope can impact folks' lives so directly. Scott is going to speak a little bit more now about our community efforts to support Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thanks, Laura. So as Laura shared, we had great success last year with the Signs of Hope, when Zero Suicide and Prevention Team stood on the streets of Center and Silverton in front of the campuses as part of the Oregon Alliance to Prevent Suicide statewide. So we're doing it again this year, and we're going to make it bigger. So Courthouse Square County staff will be signing up to take turns on May 13, which is next Friday. Zero Suicide Prevention Team and other HHS staff will be invited to join us on May 16. But on top of that, we're going to be having community partners joining the effort. Northwest Human Services will be sending three teams of staff and youths either the second or third week. We have Trillium Family Salem Team joining us. Sprague High School Youth Era will be standing near the bridge as people cross the bridge to West Salem on a particular evening, on May 25. And Boys and Girls Club will be joining us on the last day in May on the corners of Summer Market Street. But we're also excited this year to be partnering with our counterparts, our colleagues at Polk County, and under the auspices of the Mid Valley Suicide Prevention Coalition, in engaging local cafes in this coffee sleeve campaign, as you can see here. It says, "It's Okay to Not Be Okay," and on the back it has a QR code where customers can scan it, and it takes them to a landing page that has the hotline numbers, such as the National Prevention to, National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, Veterans Crisis Line, and the Polk and Marion County Psychiatric Crisis Center numbers. It also has links to trainings for suicide prevention and links to mental health resources. So we're excited to be partnering with over 20 cafes between the two counties, and they include our neighbors here at Capital Coffee, Breakpoint Coffee Company, that's been around for 20 years, and two blocks down on the opposite end of Long Javi, Cafe Capri, which opened last July. In addition to our very own Fresh Start and cafes in Silverton, Mill City, and Woodbury. But we're also very excited with the help of one of our coalition members to be getting pretty much all the high schools in Salem Kaiser involved, except for one, and notably West Salem High School, where Ms. Darrell's 10th grade class, who's working on a mental health project, will be using this as a tool for their mental health project. So I want to conclude by saying it's very encouraging how all the cafes that we've asked, that we've had the time to ask, have said yes, and I think one turned us down. I think that highlights the heightened awareness of mental health and acceptance of mental health as a priority in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for both of you for being here. One of our staff yesterday posted a picture, and I thought, I wonder where she got that coffee sleeve? She posted a picture of the coffee cup and then had something to share. So I think that's great. Good job. We all have those signs. Mine are facing the street in my window upstairs, which you can see from the road. And I don't know where they are. Are you still in your front windows?
I just took it down last week, actually.
Oh, well, now you got to put it back up.
Mine said, "You got this," or I can't remember. But it was two-sided. I wanted to look at the side that was facing me more, because I needed it.
I feel like they were important during 2020, you know? Everybody's going through a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
They could help.
I see them on my drive home. Some folks have them in their yards, and then I wondered to myself as I was driving to Turner the other day, that person works for the county. I assumed that that was just your project.
It's great, because this is actually a local company that puts these out. It's the "Don't Give Up" signs from Newburgh, so it's relatively local that we're able to support as well. And they offer these at cost to us, so.
Oh, good. Well, thank you. Thanks for all you're doing. It's really important. It's been a hard couple of years, but just in general, there's just, you know, life is hard, and I appreciate that we have our services available, people available to take care of us.
Yeah, and we continue to see an uptick in people accessing services, calling crisis lines, making appointments with mental health providers, which is encouraging because people are reaching out when they need support.
Can I make a motion, Madam Chair?
Please.
Before I, before I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just, one of the things that, I think Commissioner Cameron brings this up a lot. I think it's important, I think sometimes people can have this view of like, I'm struggling, but other people don't. And I think it's important just to remind, like, everybody struggles. We all have different struggles, but everybody struggles, and we're all in it together. And I think it's one of the things that I liked about those signs, it sort of reminded everybody, you know? And I also, I just appreciate the focus on trying to love people up and prevent people, you know, prevent suicide, you know? So it has such a devastating impact on our community when somebody loses their life. And so I appreciate that care and love for each person's life in our community. But I wanted to just remind everybody, like, we all, we all have our stuff, so.
Madam Chair, yeah, the coffee cup, I think you said, "It's Okay Not to Be Okay."
Yeah.
Yeah, been there, done that. And I think I said this last year, probably I actually had to go and get some help after driving through the fire and all the trauma that, you know, COVID and fire, and not only driving through it, but dealing with it as a commissioner, and all the stress and pressure that I was under, and it really, it really made a difference in my life to talk to somebody. And they gave me a few things to work on, and it's what I needed at the time. It was, it was really good, so it's okay to be not okay. I love that. Because when you're not okay and you admit it, and you can get some help, and.
It's okay.
And then the other one was that the sign that says, "Your mistakes do not define you," that's a big one, because, you know, we make a, we make a mistake. I can relate to personally doing stupid stuff or saying something stupid. Not stupid, I shouldn't use that word, saying something inappropriate, and you start to feel guilty about it, but you go, hey, wait a minute, that's not, that's not who I really am, and you can get through it. So I just really think this is an important thing that we need to make sure that people know it's okay to not be okay and that you need some help, and you can, maybe it's just a friend to talk to, but there's professionals out there that, that we need to, I guess, knock down the barriers to say. And I know we've had a lot of people, think of our law enforcement and what they've been through, and think of the nurses that were here this morning, what they've been through. So it's, it's really good that we can have this proclamation today.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Chair, I move that we approve a proclamation designating the month of May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Marion County.
I'll second the motion.
The motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion passes. Commissioner?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I will. Before the Board of Commissioners from Marion County, Oregon, in the matter of proclaiming the month of May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Marion County, proclamation, this matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on May 4, 2022. Whereas the mental health and wellness of Marion County residents is of the utmost importance to the well-being of Marion County as a whole. And whereas the mental health and wellness of Marion County residents has been impacted by stress, loss, and difficult traumatic circumstances over the past two years. And whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in Marion County, in Oregon and in the United States, as one in five adults and one in six children live with a mental health condition, and?
Whereas, with advocacy and effective treatment, individuals living with mental health conditions can live full and meaningful lives. And whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the adverse personal and community impacts of mental health conditions and promote recovery. And whereas shame, stigma, and unequitable access to treatment actively works against the wellness of individuals and may prevent them from seeking timely and appropriate help, and?
Whereas, every person and organization shares a role in supporting prevention and treatment efforts and reducing stigma. And whereas Marion County Health and Human Services and our community partners are committed to raising awareness, providing education around mental wellness, encouraging appropriate treatment and support options, and reducing stigma. Now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed as the month of May 2022, this health aware, excuse me, Mental Health Awareness Month in Marion County, dated in Salem, Oregon this fourth day of May 2022. Do you want to join us for a photo?
I guess so too.
I'm sure you do. Susan, come up here.
Sure.
Okay. What's that? I don't know. It's okay. I can get it dodged with the chair. It's just, I think a natural happens, you push it with your legs. Can we divide you up?
Yeah.
Great. Careful. We're going to look at her first, and then John after. One, two, three. Thank you.
Three, two, one. Thank you.
All right, two, one, two, three. Perfect. Nice to see you. I know. I don't know. I feel like this board meeting was super long.
Yeah, it is, but I'm really hungry.
I'm hungry too, but I think it's just Jan setting up the budget. It's coming, it's just like an all-day deal. It keeps changing on my calendar. It's like longer, shorter. Okay, Bill. So we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a presentation from...
I'm not sure if you want to take a break or not.
No, we have so much to do. Thank you. Overview of the Election Process. Okay, from clerk Bill Burgess.
Okay, thank you. Let me get another chair over here. So glad you invited us to come and talk about elections. Certainly, we're in the thick of elections right now.
So the community can't hear you because you're not on the microphone.
Okay.
Thank you.
So glad you asked us, invited us to come and talk about elections. We're certainly in the thick of an election right now. It was interesting listening to Ian Watts and the folks from the Republican Voter Integrity Group, and I've talked with them a few times over the last few years, a couple years, and we're going to continue with that.
Yeah, Bill, I just want to clarify that for the record, none of them identified a party, and they're, they don't want to be identified as a party, they're a non-partisan group.
Okay.
Thank you.
Also, I want to introduce to you here Jan Coleman, friend and also our interim elections and recording and licensing manager. Jan, I've had about 18 years of experience. Jan's had about twice that much experience in running elections.
Hi, Jan. Thanks for joining us today.
And so Jan is former Yam Hill County Clerk, but she's also been our Oregon Association of County Clerk's Legislative Director at times, representing us at the Oregon State Legislature when Kevin was there, which is back just a few years, I guess, Kevin.
I was young.
Yeah, okay. And it really takes a team to make this elections work. We've had folks work, some of our folks, as we were developing the ballots, worked about 12 straight days getting those ballots done. I'm trying to open this, this thing here, see if I can get my PowerPoint up. There we go. Look at that. And thanks to Jessica, we've got nice slides. Again, we're, it takes a lot of people to make this elections work, and part of what makes this elections work is not just our folks, we've got dedicated, hard-working folks that do this time after time, but we need support from the county, and we've had beautiful support from the county to be able to make this particular election happen and elections in the, in the past. Right now, we're in the thick of what we call an Oregon Closed Primary, and so the ballots, we have to have quite a few different ballot styles. We've been working on this election since before the beginning of this year, and included this time, actually doing reapportionment and making new precincts and redefining maps. But we got all that done, and because this is a closed primary, we've got about 300, actually, exactly 375 ballot styles, because folks in the Republican or Democratic parties will get separate ballots to vote for people that they want to represent them in the November election, and there's about 60,000 people in each of those two parties, but we have another 100,000 people in the county that are registered voters, 80,000 of them in the, what we call non-affiliated, and the rest in other parties. And of those people, they'll still have things to vote on, like statewide races, Commissioner for Bureau of Labor and Industries. They'll have several judge candidates from Supreme Court to Court of Appeals and Circuit Courts. And... Court to Court of Appeals and Circuit Courts. And then if you live in the city of Salem, everybody in the city of Salem is going to be voting on the mayor and again, a nonpartisan race. Some of the wards in Salem will be voting on city councilors. And then the cities of Sublimity, Aurora, and Donald have measures on the ballot. And so does the Gerber School District have a measure on the ballot. So if, depending on where you live, those are the things you're going to, to vote on. These ballots are designed in-house. It takes quite a few days, intensive work and proofing to do this, to, to test them and make sure that they can be read in the machines and, and, and get it right. Voters can request an initial or replacement ballot up to 8:00 PM on Election Day. That's really important. If you haven't got your ballot by now, you should be calling us to check and see what's going on. A new, and part of that is because people move so much. About one-sixth of the people move every year. And so that is quite something for us to deal with. We do everything we can, but it's also up to the voter if they don't get a ballot to let us know so we can get that ballot to them in a timely manner. And if voters can request an initial or replacement ballot, again, up to 8:00, 8:00 PM on Election Day, a new ballot return envelope with a unique ID number is issued with each replacement ballot. This inactivates the previous ballot return envelope, and each voter has only one active ballot return envelope. Inactivated return ballot envelope packets are received are set aside for further investigation. This is, of course, Oregon is, is the, since we voted in 1998, is full vote by mail. That doesn't mean people return their ballots by mail. It means we issue the ballots by mail. So far, we've issued over 222,000 ballots. It says of 429, that is, as actually, as of Monday morning, May 1st. But every minute, things change. The numbers of eligible voters as of Monday morning, uh, May 2nd, I'm sorry, was 209, a little over 219,000. Now, some people will mail their ballot back. And a neat thing this year is that postmarks will count as long as we get it within seven days. But please don't count on that. Most people use the ballot drop sites. And we've got 21 official sites in Marion County. You can find that in the County Voters Pamphlet. And you can also find that in the insert that's came in with your ballot. 12 of those drop sites are now 24/7 for ease and convenience for people. And safety, especially during COVID. But the 24/7 because people have so many different working hours. Now, what happens when a ballot gets back to us?
Those are like the log box type receptacles, like at the city of Kaiser or?
Yes.
There's one in Sublimity now. I saw a photo somewhere.
Yes. Yep. There's a new one, new 24/7 outside of Sublimity City Hall.
Yeah.
Which they really liked that because they were having problems during COVID. They didn't want to be open to the public. And also, if, some of the small cities would have a limit of one or two people in the office at a time.
Correct.
And so sometimes people would have to line up outside just to go in and, and cash their ballot. They have to wait till somebody else took care of their parking ticket or their planning documents.
Now, it's just people learning how to navigate a parking lot. There's a line at Kaiser, at City Hall in Kaiser, because they're trying to figure out how to get to it.
Yeah. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. And Kaiser was the first one and our busiest one. And it goes all the way back to about 2015. But anyhow, the, you see that machine there? That's our sorter scanner machine. Ballot envelopes have to go through this two or sometimes three different times before they can go to the opening boards. The, first, the, it will record the barcode on the envelope. It shows activity to the voter in that shared statewide voter registration places throughout the state so that all other county clerks know not to give that person the ballot as well as our folks up front know not to give that person another ballot. It hardly, that hardly ever happens, but it is a safeguard that's there. The signature is verified before the envelope can be opened. Verified return envelopes are sorted by precinct. Envelopes with signature issues are set aside, awaiting signature cure by voters within 21 days after the election in order to be opened and counted. Yes, we send them a letter. They have a chance to get that fixed. It used, first it was 10 days, then it was 14 days. Just recently, this year, it has changed to 21 days. If the envelopes pass signature checking, then they can go to the opening and pre-inspection boards. Opening boards are comprised of election board workers from different parties. They'll remove the ballot, the security sleeve, and other contents from the ballot return envelope. Any empty ballot return envelope is noted and documented. This is important for reconciliation later on. And yes, we receive some valid envelopes back that are completely empty with no ballot.
Whoops.
The ballot return envelope is stored in a blue bin, and the ballot goes to the pre-inspection board in a green bin. You can see the colored bins there. And when you come to visit, you, if, if you get a tour, which we urge you to do, you'll, you'll see the methods to how we do things. The, after the opening boards, go to the pre-inspection boards that batch the ballots up, make sure that the ones that are easy to read are in one stack, the ones that are harder to read are in another batch so that we can capture voter intent when we get into the counting room. For instance, the ones that have a novel written on them are handled differently than the ones that are just black or blue ink and there's no writing on.
People write messages on their ballot?
Yes.
Okay.
The, this room is not connected to the internet, really important. Ballots are scanned. Teams of two election board workers, again, of different parties, review images to ensure voter intent is recorded. For instance, did the voter really vote for two candidates in a one candidate race? Or did they cross out one or otherwise indicate their choice? Results are transported outside the secure counting room by a clean USB drive to be posted on the internet. Because again, there is no internet in this particular room.
Bill, can you clarify what happens in the case of a ballot like you just described, that somebody maybe filled in a box, but then crossed it out? Does that invalidate the ballot at that point?
No, it doesn't. It, every other race counts. That one where they've crossed it out, and that also is explained in the, in the Voters Pamphlet, and on the sheet that comes with the ballots. That one that's crossed out is not counted. So if they chose something else, then that other vote would be counted instead. If, if they chose nothing else, then that particular vote on that particular race would not be counted.
Okay. Thank you.
Ballot return envelopes postmarked by Election Day again can now be accepted up to seven days after Election Day. That's very new. But we know that sometimes it takes more than a week for something to get to us between here and Portland. Usually not, but occasionally stragglers happen. So with a ballot that's so important, we recommend that if you're getting close to Election Day, use a ballot drop box instead. Now, if you do mail it, look on the box because there's pickup dates on those boxes. And if it's 4:30 and you're putting it in at 5:00, it's not gonna get through the system and get postmarked in time. So again, you, you can mail it if you want, but do the other. If you're, especially in, in small cities, but you can do this anywhere, you can, if you're worried about it, when you go into the post office, ask them to postmark it right there with their little round postmark. It's a, it's another option. That way, we're gonna be sure that, that that gets counted. And then, of course, our Marion County website, you can get more information on the election website about this particular election and about if you want to be an observer. We certainly like having people come and observe and see how we do things. And I also give tours and many tours to, for people that would like to, to see all the different processes. And then there's our office phone number, too. That's a very short synopsis of what happens, but I understand you only wanted a few minutes. I think Rotary Club, it took 45 minutes. Lincoln Lemonboards, it took an hour and 15 minutes. But I'm sure you don't want that type of detail right now.
Well, I think it's a good introduction for people, myself included, kind of just to have a, a small visual. And I have all the intention to come down and visit with both of you, to just really go through the process, especially now that there's an election going on. I'd really like to see kind of the, the input, you know, process, output, really executed.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Bill, we had some comments earlier about maybe not having the correct addresses for people when we send out ballots. And so my question has to do with the signature checking process. Because my understanding is that basically, first, the signatures are checked by computer, by a scanner for a match. And then they go to a hu, if they, if the computer says no, those signatures don't match, then they go to a human. Is that the process?
Uh, yes, that's, that's our process now. We have a automatic signature verification. We just checked as of yesterday, we went through 300 of those to check to see how accurate it was. It was 100% accurate. There was nothing that it took that we wouldn't take. And it rejected ones that we thought were, were suspect. And so that, that's a, a thing that we audit. But that only, only accounts for about half of the signatures. Because the other half need to be looked at by a team or, or by people.
So when, when, when the signatures, when the machine says those signatures don't match and the scanner, it kicks them out, then it goes to a, a group of people to, to verify that? Is that right?
Yes, it goes to, I, I shouldn't say a group of people. We have a group of signature checkers that are in there today, at, at their computers, looking at these. We used to take the envelopes and put them up to the screen. We don't have to do that anymore. We've got images that go back and forth. And so the first signature checker has to make a quick decision between the reference signature and that. The signature checkers are trained, by the way, Oregon Secretary of State trained. And in the past, we've even had forensically trained trainers to, to do this, to help us, us learn how to do this. Now, we're not forensic checkers here. And we're looking to be sure that it's more likely the person than it's, than it's less likely the person. So if the first person says yes, then it goes through. The first person says no, then that image goes in a batch of rejected to a second person with much more experience. That person has to do a more laborious process of going in and looking at all the signatures that we have on file for that person. Because sometimes you can see changes. And then that person, if then they say no even after that, and if they've got questions, they can bring somebody else in too to look at. But they say no after that, that's all right. That's good. Because we allow people to cure their signatures. Because then we're going to send a, a letter out to that person. And then they have time to get that letter back to us with another signature on it. If the signature matches, fine. If not, not so fine. And also, if they had signed up for Track My Ballot, which we have about 16,000 people have done on our website.
I have done it.
Good for you. If you have a, so, so you should get, you got a message when we sent the ballot out. You'll get a message when we receive it. You get a message when we've accepted it.
Yes.
When accepted, it means we're counting it, okay?
I'm expecting to get a signature call. I signed so many times, my signature changed a lot and lot this year. I, I do. I fully expect to get a signature.
After your first year or two as Commissioner, I bet you're signing so much. And we get to see your signatures with the.
So this is my question, Bill. So if we know that you have lots of, of bad addresses in the list, just because people move frequently and so it's hard to keep up with it. And then you have a situation where a ballot comes in, and you could have a situation where the computer says the signature doesn't match. And you could have a person say the signature doesn't match. But if another person says the signature does match, then the ballot's counted. You don't send the letter. Why, why wouldn't it be better to be safe than sorry and say if, if a computer and a person said the signature doesn't match, at that point, they should come cure it? Rather than have sort of a process where even if multiple people have said the signature doesn't match, if one person says it does, then we automatically count it. Because my understanding is basically, the number of ballots that we actually require to be cured versus the number of ballots that are flagged for a signature mismatch is a, is a small percentage of the ballots where the signatures don't match.
Yes, through the first, first set, maybe about 10% of the ballots are, don't pass signature verification. But by the time we get down to the end, it's more like 1% that don't pass. And again, it's because we're bringing in more trained people that have the time to look at those signatures before then. This is a process and procedure that the state, we've, as county clerks and throughout the state, we've developed over the years and found this to be the most efficient and fair way. We would certainly be sending a lot more envelope, a lot more letters to people and challenging a lot more ballots if we based it on just the first check. Jan, you want to speak to that a little bit?
Sure. I'm a second checker. Okay. And I will tell you that this is my 40th year in elections. I started in January of 83. Sorry, I'm having voice issues. We don't know quite what the problem is, but I still try to talk. Anyway, my signature checking experience goes way back when we first started doing this. And my first training came through the state police. So we've had a progressive education through this. The biggest thing a second checker looks at is all the trail of all people's registrations. So some of them go way, way back. And I had one, just I was checking the other day, and, and it was doubtful to the person before me. She said, I just can't quite decide. Well, about four cards down, this person had signed with the signature we're seeing on the screen. But beside it, he had signed the signature that he had used this time. So there is a progression. You study all those things. You study how they loop, how they do all different types of things. So it, it's an in-depth thing. And you can have someone, like I did, find that second signature, that will then pass it. So that's the process.
Thank you. I think just my only concern would be, in all of our departments, people make mistakes. And so I, I, I'm not concerned about bad work or expertise. It's just that there's a, a possibility for human error in the process that if someone comes in and verifies, you don't have to worry about that because they came in and verified their ballot. So I think that's just sort of the question is, is what, you know, I know, you verified a ballot before, right?
Well, I came in, but I think what I heard Bill say is that you're sending a letter now where they can, they can sign that letter and send it back for verification. You don't actually have to appear anymore. Is that correct?
That is correct. And that again was the, the part of the vote by mail manual that we use. It's Oregon Administrative Rules that we follow. And yes, that is now allowed. In the old days, people had to, to come in. In fact, even if they forgot to sign, they had to be in by 8:00 on Election Day. And so we would try to get on the horn to call them. That's almost impossible nowadays to, to reach people. So now the, the law has changed where without a signature, you still have up to the 21 days to rectify that. In fact, yours truly forgot to sign one of his ballots. He was, he was posting it in the Corvallis downtown post office, OSU affair. And he wanted to see just exactly how long it would take to get from there to here. But unfortunately, that county clerk didn't remember to sign his own ballot.
Oh, you're so excited about the depository, I'm sure.
How long, how long, Bill? He even took a photograph. How long ago was that, Bill? When, when did you do that?
When did I do that?
When was that mistake made?
Oh, gosh. Oh, gosh, it was just a couple of years ago.
Okay, I, my first election in two thousand six, primary election, right? It was the first time I was ever on a ballot. True confession here. I sent, and I do this with my mail. I pick up my mail up maybe once a week, pile it up. This was, what, two thousand six? And after the election was over, I opened this envelope from the Elections Division, and it says, we received your ballot without a signature on it, you need to come down. It was too late. I I mean, I had fourteen days or whatever, but it was like, okay. So my first election, I didn't even vote for myself.
Well, in my first election, I had to come down and validate my signature. And it was a process in person. I I prefer the in-person curing process personally, because I think it gives them us an opportunity, the citizen, to come in and and really know that this matters. And of course, I was anxious about that ballot getting counted, because I really needed to vote for myself. And I had, that's the year I signed up for the Track My Ballot. And so I I actually dropped mine yesterday on the second floor. And so I just assumed, oh, I'll get a notice soon. But since I haven't, I'm sure it's probably sitting on your desk waiting for a signature verification. When I put it in the ballot, the front said, you seem reluctant. And I said, what's a signature thing? I don't know what my signature looks like anymore. I mean, today I signed it twenty-five times before now.
Well, have patience and watch ballot tracks. We'll certainly get back to you.
I will.
You know, part of it is people were worried about voter fraud and people signing ballots that shouldn't be signing ballots. And that does happen occasionally, but not very often. And when it does, it's usually it's a a family member. And a lot of times, that's a mistake where they sign each other's ballots, and we can ferret that out. But every once in a while, it's a family member signing all the ballots. In that case, that those ballots don't get counted. If we can get another ballot back to the right person in time, we will. But sometimes this happens toward the end, and we can't do that. There are some fines and penalties for voter registration fraud and for election fraud. With voter registration, it can be up to, I believe it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and five years in prison. So most people don't bother. I mean, it it's a high road for, to think of somebody wanting to to try this a hundred times. It's sort of like Russian roulette, you know? If somebody is going to try to steal a hundred votes, which probably wouldn't, doesn't usually affect an election, but could affect an election, it certainly is not something that that most people would be willing to do. We're just trying to get everybody that needs to vote to vote. Some person today talked about the idea that we've got so many more people voting now than we did in two thousand sixteen. And there was a really good logical explanation to that. In two thousand sixteen, in Marion County, we only had about sixty to sixty-five percent of the people that were eligible to vote registered. Now, at least the statewide number is about ninety-three percent, because in two thousand sixteen, we started the automatic voter registration process through the DMV. And that has grown quite substantially and continues to grow. You'll see that in our budget talk, and and also the cost of things is growing. You'll see that in the budget talk, too. Contracts that we've had, the our printers, our our folks can't even abide by those, because the cost of materials is so much more, that we're we're seeing increases and will continue to see increases. This is the first year the postal service is is increasing more than once in one year.
I did notice the paper was different on my ballot.
Yes, that's that that.
It's not as thick.
Good for you. I'm glad that you noticed that, and we've had calls on that, too. The normal paper that we use is a number seventy, and it's a special type of paper. And our printer was not able to get that because of the.
Supply chain.
Supply issues and supply chain issues. So we had to go to a number sixty. Now, we had tested the number sixty before, when we were years ago. So we knew that it would work. So they could get number sixty, so we took number sixty so that we could have ballots. We didn't want to have some ballots for some people and not for everybody. We needed, well, we printed over two hundred and fifty thousand to get the two hundred and twenty that we needed to get out. Because of changes and people moving and all, you you always need to have more ballots. And so, yes, those ballots are thinner, and it's makes it easier to get two ballots instead of one, because of they're thinner. And that doesn't happen very much, but it can, but it's all right, because if you get two ballots, just vote one. If you vote two ballots, we can't count any of any of another part of Oregon law. Or you can just throw the unvoted one in there with the voted one if you want to. But just just to vote one, but give us a call, too, because we want to know any of these anomalies that take place. We try to note all of these things that happen. You'll also notice the security sleeve, the blue security sleeve. We couldn't get blue paper this year. So that is really white paper painted blue. And it didn't cost any more than the blue paper. This is a nationwide concern of election officials having enough envelopes, having enough ballots, having enough this, having enough that. Even our our multi-function copier machine, a few weeks ago, we were worried because we couldn't get new, yeah, toner for that. Well, luckily, we did. You know, there there are so many different things that we're balancing. Not only this, but even staff issues, of which Jan's been able to help us with, too, to make sure that we had the right things happen for the right people at the right times. It's you probably, it's sort of like legislation, they talk about making sausage. The stress that the people are under that are running these shows, it is just, it's just amazing. And people, somebody told me yesterday, oh, you're going to get busy pretty soon, aren't you? Because it's close to Election Day. The lion's share of the work actually has already been done in the in the development of those ballots, in the proofing of those ballots, in the putting together of the voters map. Jan can tell you about that. She had all the photographs in there. And then it was, the the in, the computer was updated, and all her photos went away. And she had to spend another whole day trying to get photos back in.
So are you still, are you still only taking them via CD or USB? You're not accepting the submissions online for candidates yet? Yeah, so in lots of counties and at the state, you can submit your your candidate statement and photo and the necessary documents through an online portal. You upload the information through the website, and it downloads it to the server to avoid that problem right there that you just described. It's really updating your software, but.
Well, this wouldn't have, that's that's good. But it wouldn't avoid this particular problem, because this was taking all that information, putting it onto another computer that had Endesign on it, which is what we use. And then when that computer was updated, she.
You lost the program.
Hours and hours of work.
They updated to three sixty-five.
Yeah.
And when they did it, it, Endesign has contacts with your your photos and any of your art-type things in there. It blew all those contacts away, and the photos just disappeared. So they thought they were, would go into OneDrive, but they didn't.
Oh, bummer.
It was.
Well, it came out beautifully.
It was learning experience that wasn't so good.
All the things you don't ever want to do again that you know how to do. I can appreciate that. I have one more question for you, Bill. And it was and it was referenced today, and I've heard this a lot from different citizens around addresses. So what's the process when a ballot is printed, the envelope is printed, has the address on it? Do you have humans look at that and go, oh, obviously, nobody lives at the Oregon State Capitol. There must be an issue here? And ferret that out? Or or obviously, you just mail them, because we've heard that? What's that process look like? And who's accountable to to the law that you have to have a verified address, if you will, to receive a ballot?
We have a, quite a procedure for addresses, and and Jan can speak to this, too. But like, for instance, the address of Arches. We do allow people to use Arches. We used to use what we called a non-standard address, like under the Fourth Street Bridge or something like that for homeless people. With our new updates, that's not working, so we have to pick an address. And so the address might be a grocery store, or it might be something like Arches in different communities. As far as other places where certainly those people in their, Arches has about four hundred mailboxes, too.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Yeah, okay. So people can get their ballots there, and they can they can use that as their address, because they're they're moving all the time. We have other things for continuous travelers. Sometimes people that are now overseas, they can vote at their last address in Marion County, if they're a Marion County voter. So sometimes that's why people's names will be on a residential address that even the people living there don't even know who they are or or anything like that. But that's still their residential address as far as voting, as far as both state and federal law, that they're still allowed to vote, even though they are living in a foreign country. They may, and sometimes these are missionaries, sometimes these are are service people. Many times when they're in a foreign country, they can only vote on the federal races, not the state races, depending on how they answer some questions, whether they get a full ballot there. And we can, you know, we can look up any address and tell you what the situation might be. Or we can look into that for people.
I guess where I'm confused is, is the ballot gets mailed to the address on the envelope. And for, in your example, people overseas that are using their previous residential address, that ballot's going to that residential address, correct?
No, shouldn't be. It should be going to the overseas, go ahead, Jan.
Okay, so you have a a ship-to address and a residential address on file. Is that what you're stating? Okay, I understand. So maybe that's where the confusion with some of the, from the individuals earlier were coming from. I don't know. I mean, it seems odd to me, and I have a concern about anybody receiving a ballot at the State Capitol. Because I don't want politicians who live in Mottlemah County voting in Marion County, right? I think that their ballot should go to their house. And so why would you allow a ballot to go to the State Capitol?
Well, if you can find an instance of that and bring it to us, we will certainly look at that. But people like some of our police officers, our sheriffs, would rather have their ballots go to a facility where they where they work, rather than to their residential address. And so that's something that you see. Some judges and other people like to come in our office to pick up the ballot, too. And we certainly can do that. There's a big difference between the residential address tells what ballot style, what are those three hundred and seventy-five ballot styles you're going to use? But the mailing address is completely different. So many people are using post office boxes now, too, for mailing addresses, or even these private mailboxes.
So for people who are doing their research on this, are both of those lists connected to the voter public? Or is one not public? Okay.
Like the police officers he's talking about?
Yeah, I know you have to go through this whole, like, rigmarole to get that.
Right. And there are some other people that are eligible to do that through the state, so, yeah.
So the only the people that apply for that redaction, if you will, or that protection is not public, but everything else is?
Yeah, there there are different levels of confidential voters. As far as generally, if, it depends on how the researcher asks for the list from the state, whether they have both a residential address and a mailing address. They have to be, they have to ask that specifically, and the state has to determine what they're going to give them.
I see, okay. Thank you. Well, thank you for this. I don't know, I don't think I've seen you down here since I've been a commissioner. I know there's lots going on in your world, so it's great to see you in person. I appreciate your very speediest responses to my emails when I shoot them down with some random query. You do a good job of chasing me, my thoughts.
Well, thank you. We want people to be as informed as possible and to and to come to us with the elections questions. So we really appreciate that, and we appreciate people coming if they want to observe, too.
I'm going to make it happen this election.
And Ian Watson has, and some of his group have observed with us in the past.
Thank you. Do you have any further questions?
Well, I just heard that the you mail a ballot to a different address, right? But I do this. My residence is there, but I have a P O box here, because I collect my mail here. So my ballot shows up here, although it is for the people that are running where I live. So is that what's happening if I'm a confidential voter? I'm saying, I'm registered at a certain address, but my ballot goes someplace else? Because when you look me up, if you look me up on the voters' files, you wouldn't see my P. I don't think you'll see my P O box, you'll, will you? You'll see my, you'll see my residence.
Did you fill out the confidential paperwork?
No, I, everybody, everybody knows where I'm at. They can come get me anytime.
Yeah.
So.
The traditional voter address file is not going to show your P O address. But your P O address is not confidential. So if they were to query for that also, they could get that. I'm not sure, you know, it depends on the report that the person asked.
But if I was a confidential person and my.
Nothing would appear.
Well, as a confidential person, your, certainly your residential address would not appear. I'm not sure if the postal address would appear either.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
The information says it, basically. It just says not available. Yeah.
Or you'll see a lot of Xs in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you both so much.
Thank you, folks, for the opportunity.
Enjoy your next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
All right, now let's move on to the consent calendar. Commissioner Cameron, would you read the consent calendar, please?
Well, that's supposed to happen at like nine thirty.
I know, we're happy to hear it.
I'm hungry, so I'm going to read it. Madam Chair, I'll move the consent calendar. First, under Board of Commissioners, O L C C application approval for Vision Brewing Company, LLC, D B A Vision Brewing Company, Aurora, Oregon. Under Business Services, accept the twenty twenty-two compensation board recommendations for elected officials and forward recommendations to the Budget Committee. Under Finance, approve an order for a one-time pandemic recognition payment for non-represented irregular employees. Under Public Works, approve an order authorizing the expenditure of county monies for emergency repairs on Kenwood Avenue Northeast and Alma Avenue Northeast. Under the Tax Office, approve an order for a property tax refund in the amount of thirty thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-two pennies for the city of Kaiser, account number five one nine nine three eight. And under the Tax Office, approve an order for a property tax refund in the amount of fifteen thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seven pennies for CoreLogic Tax Services, account number five one four one five zero.
I will second the motion.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. And now we'll move on to our first action item. Under Health and Human Services, to consider approval of the contract for services with Robert Half International, Inc. in the amount of five hundred and forty thousand dollars to provide temporary staffing retroactive to June first, twenty twenty-one, through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Ryan?
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I am here seeking approval of an extension of our contract with Robert Half International. So they are a staffing agency. And this was a contract that we engaged in early on in the COVID pandemic, actually, because we needed additional accounting support to track all the different revenue sources that we were receiving and really track and monitor our expenditures and make sure that they're being assigned to the appropriate funding source. And so we had spent approximately a hundred and sixty thousand during the duration of that contract. And we're seeking to extend it for two years, and then adding that additional three hundred and sixty thousand for the same expenditure rate, just to have this available to us. Although I can tell you, we've been winding down expenditures on this contract pretty significantly over the last few months. And I, and we're anticipating that, once we get through our fiscal year end and sort of the final contract reconciliation with Oregon Health Authority, that should take place in August and September, that we would likely not need to utilize this additionally. But we want to make sure it's available, you know, just just in case, depending on the nature of the funds that we may receive in the next year. And in addition to some accounting support for our COVID nineteen team, it was also, it's been used. We've had some staffing shortages for kind of general office support within our. used, we've had some staffing shortages for kind of general office support within our, our department. Our temp pool, who we historically have used for kind of office specialists that come in and backfill when people are out of the office, you know, sick leave, vacation leave, you know, that, those sorts of things. It had really been depleted over the last year or two. So there have been times that we've engaged Robert Half to get some general office support to kind of help out with operations. But again, we, we've got active recruitments to rebuild our temp pools out there and we're, we're hoping to not have to utilize this too significantly long-term. But this is just sort of a, an emergency, just in case we need some additional staffing resources.
Great, any questions?
Nope.
Great, then I will take a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the contract for services with Robert Half International, Incorporated, amount of $540,000 to provide temporary staffing retroactive to June 1st, 2021 through May 31st, 2024.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thanks, Ryan, thanks for your time this morning.
No problem, I learned a lot of interesting things.
All right, now we're going to move on to an action item under Public Works. Russ Dilly is going to join us. To approve an order establishing a camping fee and an extra vehicle fee at the North San Am Park effective May 15th, 2022. Hold on, we have a presentation, I love it.
Good morning.
Good morning. That's so pretty. Oh, there we go. Yeah.
There we go. Good morning. For the record, Russ Dilly, Parks Coordinator for Marion County Parks. As you are, as you are well aware, we entered into an agreement with Oregon State Parks to take over the management of North San Am Park. That started on April 1st and we were fortunate that our hosts stayed with us. So we have someone that overlooks the park and helps keep it maintained. There are many amenities at the park and one of them is, one of the boat ramp. And since the fires, there have only been four boat ramps that are open and we now own two of them. There is a picnic shelter with electricity and numerous other picnic tables throughout the park. But the big one is we have 13 tent campsites. So we are looking to utilize the campsites for our visitors. And camping would be on a first come, first served basis. We hope to start on June 1. We'll be using an Iron Ranger system. And if you don't know what an Iron Ranger system is, on this slide here in the lower left, there's a fee tube and a box goes in that and it gets locked in. And the campers fill out envelopes, put their payment in, put it into the box. And then from there, the hosts come in, take the envelopes out and then check as to who is paid and who hasn't paid. Then they take the money and put it, the envelopes and put it into a safe. And then I go up on a regular basis and take the envelopes back out, take them to Public Works where our accounting people reconcile it. We're also in the process of purchasing new camping fee envelopes as the ones that we had burned up at Bear Creek.
Oh, cool.
So in order to do all this, we need your approval and a board order to adopt our fee structure. And so our fees, what we're proposing is a $20 per night camping fee with a $5 extra vehicle fee. And through our, one of our consultants, Eco Northwest, they came up with a graph here that shows that $20 is kind of right in line with our sister agencies around us. And actually, on, on an average, we're $8 lower than, than that. So that's kind of what I got.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, I'm, thank you for your work.
Do you tent camp?
Yeah, that's what we do.
Yeah.
Right now, my kids are little, so we've been mostly tent camping in the backyard. We had a rockin' backyard camping season last year. I'm hoping, hoping this year's going to be as good.
I love that. I know you don't tent camp, I'm not even.
What? I stayed in a tent in my backyard last year.
I remember this story, actually. Maybe we shouldn't tell the story.
And I actually got a ticket in my head.
Yeah, that's right.
I had to go to the doctor and get certain antibiotics on Monday because I, yeah, it was, no, I tent, I don't need to tent camp anymore, but I can. I have two tents.
I love tent camping.
I have sleeping bags.
You can go glamping.
Glamping, I do that. But I actually love to be in a tent.
One of my best tent camping stories ever is, I was in college and I came back and I was like, it's one of these things where you only get to see your friend for like one weekend, you haven't seen him for years. So like, we're going camping and it was pouring sheets, like sheets of rain, right? So we do this like five mile or 10 mile hike in and it's, you know, nine o'clock at night by the time we're done. And so we like find this cave, it's like a, kind of like a tunnel thing, like, okay, we'll put the tent in there and that way we'll be a little bit dry. So we start cooking in there and then you just see these spiders just dropping from the ceiling and they're about this big, right? And they're dropping in our food and they're dropping in our tents. And so we hiked out and we got back to our car at like, you know, one in the morning and drove home. So that, that was not super successful trip.
That's a story, if I ever did hear one. Well, this is a beautiful park and I'm super excited that we're finally here to this point. It took a while, like a year to get that, to get to their agreement, to get the park going. It's a beautiful, I, you know, honestly, I'd never, I have just driven by it probably 25,000 times in my life and hadn't stopped until we were considering it for another project. And I think it's beautiful. It's a great place to fish. People like to fish. You can bank fish from there and I like to fish, so anyway, thank you. So I will take a motion if there's anything further. Commissioner Cameron?
All right, Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve an order establishing a camping fee and extra vehicle fee for North San Am Park effective May 15th, 2022.
I will second the motion.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. When does the camping season close? You said June 1st it'll open?
Probably around the end of September.
Okay, and so you have that noticed on the website or something? Well, you, I know you're going to change that sign at some point to say Marion County. And are, will you have like a open, closed type for people? So they don't have to keep coming down there to see if there's open spaces? The hosts will manage that?
Yeah, it'll be one the host can flip down and it'll say campground full.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Well, thank you, thanks for doing this.
All right, thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to Tom Kissinger. To consider approval of the incoming funds purchase agreement with Morrell Logging LLC in the amount of $176,041.50 for the sale and removal of recovered timber from wildfire damaged trees located at Salmon Falls Park. Oh, yay.
Yes. So for the record, Tom Kissinger, Parks Program Supervisor, and we're here today to consider approval of a purchase agreement for recovered timber in Salmon Falls Park. So in about mid-March, I think it was March 15th, we put out a request for offers on Oregon buys, which closed on April 6th. We had three bidders and Morrell Logging was the highest bidder. They actually were also the highest bidder for our trees at Niagara Park, so we've worked with them in the past. That actually helped expedite this process. They've been great to work with, so we're excited to work with them again. And this will, basically right after this is approved, they will begin hauling those trees out of the park and we can begin our cleanup efforts. The total price of $176,041.50 will go into the Parks Fund, which will be reinvested into the rehabilitation and restoration of Salmon Falls Park. And the staff recommends approval of this purchase agreement.
Okay, so you can explain that for me because, you know, usually we're just paying people to take care of things, but now we're paying someone to come and remove the logs and then give us money back?
We are actually receiving $176,000. They will then sell them at market and, you know, that's the, yeah, that's the difference.
And what's the timeline here? Because it's not, when are they, when's that part going to be cleared of logs?
So it's, it's really dependent upon drivers. So they contract with, you know, kind of LLC drivers, independent drivers. They have some of their own and it just depends on how many loads there are. So we're actually meeting with them on Monday, I think Monday of next week to go over operations and we can provide an update on how long that will take. It doesn't, Niagara took about three weeks total to clear the logs.
So we're not having months. Like hopefully they get started sometime next month and then a few weeks from there it'll be cleared and then you can get to work and clean up.
Yeah, exactly.
That's good.
Probably two months at the most and that would be like if something, if they didn't have enough drivers, basically.
Okay, and then I would really love to know what you're going to spend that $176,000 on, so if you can come and provide a Parks update as these progress, these projects are going, I would like that.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Commissioner Cameron?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Tom, yesterday when I drove home, I noticed there's still a lot of logs there. Those are the ones they didn't buy.
At Niagara?
Yeah.
So those are actually river trees that were cut after the original sale. We will be doing a follow-on sale to sell those trees as well.
One day I drove by and they had this huge crane out over the, it was that tree that you pointed out to me that they were in, in the old dam.
Yep, so that was actually an operation to remove some trees that were around the historic dam. And basically what they did was they cut the trees in sections and pulled them out with the crane, so there was no chance of them falling on the dam.
Yeah, so, so you're saying those other logs that are still sitting there will go, they will be sold?
They will be sold.
Okay.
Yes.
Not firewood for our juveniles?
They could also be used for that. We actually did that at Bear Creek. Some of the logs that weren't quite, you know, saw no quality. We actually, I think it was 50 cords of wood.
Wow.
That we hauled out of there for the juvenile program. Yeah.
Fantastic, all right.
Thank you. Anything?
Nope.
Great, then I will take a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the incoming funds purchase agreement with Morrell Logging LLC in the amount of $176,041.50 for the sale and removal of recovered timber from wildfire damaged trees located at Salmon Falls Park.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion passes. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
All right, and our last action item from Ryan is to consider approval of the Public Improvement Agreement with Roy Hought Construction LLC in the amount of $4,600,049.20 to provide asphalt concrete resurfacing for various Marion County roads through November 30th, 2023.
Hi, good morning. For the record, Ryan Cruther, Marion County Capital Projects Manager. As you said, today I'm here to talk about, oh, good, our resurfacing contract. We have two main projects. The first is our 101 project. It's going to occur near State and Sublimity on Triumph Road and Fern Ridge Road. The second is our 102 contract. This is going to be in northern Marion County. You can see here, it's a variety of roads throughout northern Marion County. They include Riverside, Arnt, Mahoney, and. I'm going to go ahead and get my, my road list out so that I actually don't miss any. So Shempui Riverside, Windsor Island, Ravina, Naples and 22nd and Mahoney. So you can see here the existing conditions. It's not like this throughout all of these roads. This is a, a bad area. And so you'll see a lot of them just need surfacing, but you do see areas like this that, that need more repairs. So the plan is to pave six miles of road with our 101 contract and approximately 20 miles of road with our 102 contract. We'll do the pavement repairs as required, like we saw on that last slide. We'll add aggregate to the gravel shoulders in order to bring the shoulders up to the new grade. We'll also install the reflective centerline markers so that you, you can see that centerline at night and it, it improves safety. And then any other miscellaneous work that's required, including manholes, driveway connections, any other small items that we, we typically do with a paving project. So this was broken into two projects and so a contractor could win one or both. In this case, Roy Hought Construction was a low bid on both. The 101 project, they bid $905,788. And the 102 project, they bid $3,694,261. And then we also break these because they have different completion dates. The 101 project has to be completed by the end of June and so they could start that assuming you approve the contract as soon as we give them notice to proceed. And then the 102 contract actually can't start until July and then it would be completed by the end of September. With that, I'd open it up to any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? We've been talking about roads a lot lately. Lots of roads in Marion County. Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, I'll move we approve the Public Improvement Agreement with Roy Hought Construction LLC in the amount of $4,600,049.20 to provide asphalt concrete resurfacing for various Marion County roads through November 30th, 2023.
And I'll second the motion.
All right, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Okay, the calendar. I'll read it really fast. Yeah, I'll just do it real quick while you start signing.
All right.
All right, today is May 4th. We started at 9:00 AM, we're in the boardroom. Senator hearing room for board session on the first floor, 555 Court Street. Later today, 1:15, we have a budget committee meeting in the Commissioners Boardroom and virtual fifth floor, 555 Court Street. And then immediately following that, at 1:30, we have a B O C C A O meeting, executive session if needed pursuant to O R S 192660 to A B D E F H I in the Commissioners Boardroom, fifth floor, 555 Court Street. And then at 4:00 PM today, the Micro Shelter Art Reception at the Salem Art Association Bush Barn Art Center, 600 Mission Street Southeast. And then on Friday at 9:00 AM, we have a Congressman Schrader check signing at the Woodburn Fire Station, 1776 Newburgh Highway in Woodburn. And then on Tuesday, the 10th, we have the Cities Marion County Meeting at the Turnaround Cafe at 7760 Third Street Southeast and Turner. And then Tuesday, the 10th, at 11:30, we have the Corrections and Nurses Appreciation Week Celebration at the Marion County Jail, 4,000 Ozzol Highway Southeast Salem. That's a short calendar. I like that.
That's pretty good.
Yes, and I got a text from a staff person earlier today, where did my agenda go? To remind everybody that today is National, like Star Wars Day and may the fourth be with you.
May the fourth be with you. There you go, that's pretty good.
What's that?
Who gave that?
I know. I love it.
I think I've seen his songs.
I'm sure. Last night I attended the McNary High School musical performance activity at the Elsinore. So it was the wind ensemble, it was the choir and it was also the band. And, no, excuse me, the orchestra. And they together, they performed a Superman song.
Ah, there you go.
I know, you almost interrupted my Dodger Giant game with your live Facebook. I said, Danielle Bethel live at Mary High School and I go, let's see, what do I want to do?
You should not be getting notifications from me, Commissioner.
I was tired.
Well, it was a, it was a little over two hour performance from the three programs and, I mean, I enjoy music in general.
Oh, I love music.
And we have some really skilled kiddos in our community, but I tell you what, that, Superman is a big deal. So as soon as the winds started going, I was like, I know what this is. And my husband smiles, he's like, Superman. And then for the next four minutes, they just performed this beautiful loud ensemble in the Elsinore Theater, which is a beautiful theater to be in. So anyway.
I have a kid's story.
Okay.
Of, of reminding me of my place in the world and how humble I ought to be.
Okay.
So she's learned, my daughter's learning long division and it's been a long time since I've done long division. And so I, I was like looking at it and I, I just sort of like did the division in my head, but I didn't, I actually draw it out. And she's like, Dad, you actually have to do the work.
Show your work.
And so I, I was like, okay, so I, I had to Google how to do long division. And she looks at me and she just goes, do you even know how to do math? That was, that was her statement to me.
Who said that?
My nine-year-old daughter.
Ah, yeah.
And I was like, no, I guess not, because I'm, I'm having to teach myself long division.
Well, first of all, she probably learned it the way we learned it because she goes to private school. But in the public school now, I actually, when my son was in the fourth grade, had to go take a class with his teacher, so they could reteach all the parents how to do long division, because they do this version called hangman addition, or, uh, division. And it's not based on the way we all learned, which was memorizing your math facts, your times tables, and then doing your multiplication across the top and the side. It's where you guess all the way down the side until you come up with the answer. And it's not complete nonsense. And.
You guess?
You guess at, like, okay, well, maybe if we're saying, you know, five divided by twenty, how many, you know, coins could fit in there? And then you put that number, and then you just do this, the multiplication down the side versus knowing your math facts, knowing your multiplications, and just being able to visualize it. What I also learned in that same factor is that you don't have to do that. I, I Googled the Oregon Department of Education system and what the outcome was, and I had my kids do it the right way, which I consider the way I was taught and not the new way. So they know how to do long division the way I don't know how to do it. Which, by the way, I feel pretty good about as an adult. But when I was in elementary school, not so much.
Math hasn't changed a whole lot, to my knowledge, ever.
Well, we are in a different world today, Commissioner. Is there anything else?
No, it's adjourned.
Great, meeting adjourned. Thank you.